Good evening. Thank you all for joining us for the special meeting of the Board of Trustees of Socorro ISD. Today's date is July 8, 2019, and the time is 6 o'clock. If you will all please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 3, New Business A: Consider Approval of Request for the Use of School Facilities. Dr. Graham?
Good evening, Ms. Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, and Board members. I just need your approval on this one item, which is use of facilities.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Getta and a second by Mr. Mina. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Graham.
Thank you.
Item 3B: Discussion on Possible Action Regarding Request for the City of Socorro, 15-foot wide along North Rio Vista Road at Sanchez Middle School for the proposed widening of North Rio Vista Road.
Thank you, Board President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the Board. Steve Blanco, Legal Counsel for the District. It's my understanding that the Board wants to take up both items 3B and 3C to receive some legal advice and close session on those items. So it asks that we move 3B and 3C to the actual closed session, executive session for the Board, and then begin and take up now the speech-language pathologist level 3 grievance.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Getta and a second by Mr. Gonda. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries.
At this time, the agenda is set up for the oral presentation regarding the level 3 grievance appeal filed by AFT on behalf of certain diagnostician and SLP members to be heard in a closed session. I've had a conversation with the AFT representatives. They've asked that that actually be conducted for the oral presentations in an open session, which is right under the policy. Obviously, the administration agrees with that. So we're going to have the oral presentations conducted here, so nobody has to leave. Everybody can stay in an open session. Thank you.
Okay. We, the Board of Trustees of the Socorro Independent School District, are meeting to consider the oral argument and presentation in the level 3 grievance appeal of AFT on behalf of certain members. For the record, we have a quorum for the following Board members: Mr. Gary Gondada, Mr. David Morales, Cynthia Nahara, Paul Getta, and Eddie Mina. In accordance with local policy DGBA, the Board will allow 10 minutes for oral presentation from each party, with four additional minutes each for rebuttal, if any, for a total of 14 minutes for each side. The Board will save their questions to the end of the oral arguments. At this time, we will commence with the hearing. Will the employees' representative please state -- I'm sorry, excuse me. We do need a timekeeper. Is that okay for Claudia to keep it? Okay. Will the employees' representative please state your name, announce whether you are ready, introduce any persons who are with you, and explain their relationship to this proceeding?
Good evening, President Nahara, members of the Board, and Dr. Espinoza. My name is Rosie Perez, and I am field representative and organizer with Socorro American Federation of Teachers. And this evening, I have with me Jeanette Escondrias, educational diagnostician; I have Vanessa Arriola, speech-language pathologist; I have Rebecca Orozco, speech-language pathologist; and Claudia Recoder, educational diagnostician. And they are all parties to this grievance filed on their behalf.
And ladies, you do understand it's just 10 minutes total.
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Blanco said he was donating five minutes from his presentation.
(laughing).
Okay, so, we begin now? Oh, okay.
Will the administration's representative please state your name, announce whether you are ready, introduce any persons who are with you, and explain their relationship to this proceeding?
Thank you, Board President Nahara. Steve Blanco will be handling the administration's presentation tonight. (inaudible) decision-making process, and we are ready to proceed. Thank you.
The Board will consider only the specific evidence in the record. The Board understands that the oral argument presented at the hearing is not evidence, but the party's interpretation of the evidence in the record. Procedurally, the employees' representative will open the oral argument, and will have 10 minutes of uninterrupted time. The administration's representative will then present oral argument, and will have 10 minutes of uninterrupted time. Each representative will then have four minutes for rebuttal argument, if any. Members of the Board of Trustees are asked to reserve all questions or comments until all parties have concluded their oral arguments and rebuttals, so as not to interfere with the party's time allotments. At this time, our employees' representatives will now proceed.
So I know that you all have received the extensive record regarding this grievance. We did put together something very brief that'll kind of refresh your memory regarding why we are here today, and the ladies will go ahead and pass those out to you. Basically, we had requested a reclassification the last time that reclassifications were open. These groups have requested this twice before, so third time's the charm. They received the reclassification after six years back in -- we filed the request in January 2018. They received notification that they were reclassified in the summer of 2018. Both diagnosticians and speech-language pathologists and assistants were indeed reclassified and were notified via email and letter at the end of June, June 21st. When the school year resumed, we still did not have a compensation package for these individuals. They originally were on a teacher counselor pay scale, and they requested to be moved to an administrative pay scale. The research shows in the paperwork that was filed that neighboring districts pretty much throughout the entire region, Region 19, all had their diagnosticians and speech pathologists and assistants in an administrative professional pay scale, except for Socorro Independent School District. And so through submission of TASB and response of TASB, they did receive the reclassification. However, notice of their compensation was not received until September of 2018. And so the grievance that was filed is because there was a breach of contract through the illegal reduction in salary after they had lost the unilateral right to resign, the rolling over of the stipend, which thus resulted in the elimination of potential earnings of future stipends compared to the other districts, and felt misled about the results of the reclassification. So in your packet, we're basically wanting to review -- it will have information about the two positions, the job descriptions, the minimum, mid, max daily rate, the stipends paid to these positions in neighboring districts, which our employees will no longer be able to earn after this current school year -- for this new school year, that stipend has been -- is no longer offered to these positions. So our first speaker, Jeanette Escondrias, is going to review educational diagnosticians.
Good afternoon, President Nahara, Board members, Dr. Espinoza. Thank you again for allowing us this time. And I won't go over what Rosie went over, but it's been six years. Previously, the diagnosticians were listed in the pay scale for school counselors. One of our major concerns when we began this process was when the new campuses were opening, a new diagnostician position was not being projected or budgeted for when that school was staffed. In the past, what would happen is existing diagnosticians would absorb that caseload, which created huge caseloads, just overworked diagnosticians. The counselors were staffed at that point, but we weren't. Previously, enormous caseloads were considered to be over 90. At this point, because of steady increases over the year, we are handling an average of 130 to 150 in caseloads. Okay? This fluctuates throughout the school year. So sometimes when you get the numbers at the beginning of the school year, it does seem very low, because we still have students that haven't enrolled. A lot of the times, we get students when the other school districts are opening or going back to campus, to schools, then we start getting more students. Our numbers progressively increase due to initials. We start to assess more students, child find. We get students in as transfers. Even when students leave, for every student that leaves, we'll get three more for that one position, for that one seat. So throughout the school year, the numbers fluctuate. At the end of the school year, we end up with much higher numbers than when we began. When I talk about caseloads, I'm not including the students that are currently being assessed or any students that are in child find. It's currently being served. We still have to service students in terms of assessing them. When they leave, we need to follow them, make sure that whoever's -- wherever they're going to understands that they're being served and that they need services. It takes a lot of follow-up and sharing of information for students that leave and students that come in as transfers. Currently, educational diagnosticians are determining dominant language through assessments, through the cognitive and achievement assessments. Once we determine the dominant language, we assess in that language. ARD meetings are held in Spanish. Reports and paperwork are translated to parents in their native language, and they are provided with an audio recording of the meetings in their native language. This is one of the reasons that we're asking for the reconsideration of stipends, as other school districts do give stipends for language. In the last few years, our director, Mr. Ortega, has asked for additional positions, just to fulfill the growing needs of the district. Another concern was pay. When we compared caseloads, workloads, and daily rate, SISD diagnosticians carry enormous caseloads. Job duties are triple, and our daily rate is at least $10 less a day than those in the neighboring districts. And when we calculate this, we're using the 203. That's the average that is worked in the other districts. However, because we have that much more job responsibilities, we're at a 212, and we really need all of our days to complete the job duties that we have. For example, the extra job duties would be the file monitoring. We do monitor files. They don't do that in the other school districts, just to make sure that the teachers and our staff on campus are in compliance every nine weeks. Initial logs, the SPP data, we follow that as well. We make sure that the information is correct in the system. And even when the end of the school year comes, we make sure that bus routes, the students are being accounted for, who's going to what school and what's needed at the receiving school. The HR department has tried to compare our overall salaries to those of neighboring districts using overall salaries. This is not comparing apples to apples, as we do work more days and have significantly bigger caseloads and workloads, and the work duties are bigger than theirs. Caseloads in the surrounding districts, when we've called to see, you know, what's the average caseload, they tend to be at 80. If they reach 90, that's considered a huge caseload. They also consider the immigration population. They consider military. None of that really goes into consideration with us. It's just a matter of making sure that we're covering the campuses. The neighboring districts continue to provide stipends, recognizing the highly specialized nature of our job. In addition, a stipend for bilingual diagnosticians is provided. Last summer, the reclassification to a Level 104 was approved at the summer school board meeting, with salary scales pending, as Rosie mentioned. At this point, it was not clear what the salary difference would be or how the diagnosticians would fall into the existing Level 104. And what ended up happening is we did get that 2% raise that everyone got, and then they rolled over the stipend into our salaries. So it made it look on the paperwork that we had gotten a significant increase, when really it was what we had, what we would have gotten anyways. At this point, the process started six years ago. Within that timeframe, we've lost a total of 17 diagnosticians. Of those 17, only three left due to retirement. The remaining have gone to other school districts and are working in those school districts. We have replaced those individuals with new diagnosticians. They do require mentoring, and so that falls on the existing diagnosticians. At that point, you take on mentoring someone, their campus, whatever's going on in their campus, and your existing campuses. So you have to teach them the system, assessment, all of the procedures that go on in our district and at the campuses. So that causes even more of a workload. Our workload is greater, and we do have a lower compensation. Recruitment is an issue and is a concern for us, as positions in other districts are coveted for the reasons mentioned. Educational diagnosticians possess an analytical understanding of people, specifically children and the development of children. We have the unique opportunity to give into a child's life in a way that no one else can.
Good evening, President Nahara, members of the Board, and Dr. Espinoza. My name is Vanessa Arriola.
Ladies, I'm sorry, your time is up.
I want to ask, I want to hear. This is a big issue.
That's up to you all. Do we need to make a motion, Steve, or?
Yeah. If, if, understanding you, you're saying that you'd like to allot them some additional time?
Yes.
Yeah, that's a board decision. It's up to you all.
Steve, on all grievances, do we allow only 10 minutes for them to speak?
It's in the policy. It's 10 minutes.
It's always been 10 minutes in every --
Well, I'm not going to say it's always been that, because there are good times.
This is the first time I've ever had one.
We've only had one presentation for arguments, and this is it.
That was before either of us.
It's up to you all.
I make the motion to give them more time.
I second it.
Good. If I can ask a question? Another five minutes due? Suffice? Five more minutes?
You need a vote.
I beat?
Motion to give them another five minutes.
We have a motion and a second. We don't have a vote.
I resent my motion to give them another five minutes.
I'll go ahead and second that.
I have a motion by Mr. Gondada to allow five more minutes on the time clock for the employees' representatives to speak. It is seconded by David Morales. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Ladies, you have an additional five minutes.
Thank you. Thank you. We really appreciate that. Good evening, President Nahara, members of the Board, and Dr. Espinoza. My name is Vanessa Arriola. On behalf of the speech-language pathologists, I'd like to review the purpose of our stipend and share comparisons with our neighboring school districts. We have heard the process of the reclassification and the rolling in of our stipend that applies to our department as well. The speech-language pathologists are a therapeutic and diagnostic service for students with communication and swallowing disorders, and we do generate revenue for our school district. Our profession requires a master's degree, as well as a Texas state license, and a national certificate of clinical competency that is maintained yearly. The purpose of our stipend, we had a three-level stipend, one for our assistants. We also had a variation of our stipend that accounted for new hires that were unexperienced that required mentoring. They're called clinical fellows, as well as those who are highly certified, state-licensed with a clinical competency. The rolling of our stipend into our base salary no longer allows us to account for that variation in the people that we hire and we hold in our department. We also provide individualized therapies for students with communication disorders in Spanish, and our district is one of the few that does not offer a bilingual stipend to our staff. I'm going to review some stipends from our neighboring school districts. In Esleta, the stipend for a certified state-licensed SLP is $15,000. For their clinical fellow, it's $9,000. In EPISD, they offer $11,000 for their highly certified, $3,000 for their clinical fellow. In Clint, it's $11,500 for their fully licensed, $9,000 for their clinical fellow. And in SISD, we no longer offer any stipend, neither for our highly certified nor our clinical fellows. In the past, we were offering $9,500 and $8,500 respectively. So we no longer are comparable to our neighboring school districts. I'm going to let Ms. Orozco review the impact that that has had on our department.
The impact that it's had on our department is that we're having difficulty retaining our qualified, certified speech-language pathologists. Some of our openings recently have been filled with speech-language assistants and clinical fellowship graduates, which we are required to supervise, not mentor, supervise. They work under our license. So anything going wrong with billing or services, they're working on our license, which does impact our livelihood. Caseloads are higher, which our American Speech-Language Pathology Association recommends a certain ratio. And because we've lost our stipend, we -- the morale has lowered, and we've recently lost several well-qualified speech-language, certified speech-language pathologists.
Thank you. We appreciate the additional time.
Thank you. The employees' representative may now present -- wait, may now proceed.
Thank you, Board President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the Board. Steve Blanco for the administration. I want to back up a little bit and talk about the purpose for the hearing tonight. You heard at the very beginning, under the policy, that this is a review by the Board, that it's a review of the evidence and the information that's already been established and presented, and it's in the record. At a prior meeting, you received the CD and the summary, and included within that summary was a decision that was rendered at Level 3 by Linda Cooper, the designated hearing officer for the matter. Ms. Cooper, in her opinion, which I have here, it's six or seven pages long, goes through in good detail the evidence, the arguments, and her opinion on what that evidence showed and revealed regarding the requests by the grievance. Your purpose as a Board is to review that. What I say, and what the ladies have spoken before me have said, is not evidence. That's obviously their interpretation of the evidence. And I'm going to say some things that may be at odds with what they just told you. It's not my intent to argue with them. It's just to recount what was in the record. The first thing is, this grievance does not include a breach of contract claim. And that was brought up, one of the first things that was mentioned. If you go back and you look at the grievance forms, on the initial grievance form that was filed, and it was, it was accepted in December of 2018, December 19th of 2018, there were three items that were requested in that grievance, and that's all -- there were three items that were requested in the grievance, and that's all that the Board, and actually the hearing officer, entitled and allowed under the law to review. One was that the group of employees in their various categories be compensated comparable to other districts as requested in the reclassification process. Two, to reinstate the stipends. It is true that there was a stipend previously paid, and I'll get to that in a second. And three, to be provided with the formula or the manner used to calculate the new pay levels. So those are the only three issues for this Board to consider. One, are they receiving comparable pay compared to other districts? Two, should you reinstate the stipends? Add it back on to the salary that's already being paid, which includes the previously paid stipends. And then number three, grant them some relief to explain the process by which this was reached. You can go through Ms. Cooper's decision, and I will call your attention in particular to pages three and four of the decision, where she goes through the reclassification process and the recommendations, and she outlines the manner in which it was done. For our purpose, the most important thing was that the reclassification for this group of employees was done using TASB as a consultant and based on TASB recommendations. You all know who TASB is. They make the review and analysis based on statewide and regional data, and they're comparing salaries. And they do it to ensure that there's comparability and there's a competitive factor between the districts. You don't want to be a district that is so far below the median or base level pay. You don't want to be a district that's so far above, because then you're overpaying. So they came in, they conducted their analysis, and at the end of the analysis, they made the recommendation that stipends not be paid separately. Stipends be part of the base salary and the base level pay to this group of employees. We're dealing with three different groups of employees: diagnosticians, speech-language pathologists, and speech-language pathologist assistants. Those are the three groups. TASB evaluated the employees that Socorro has, looked at the stipends, compared it to the market, and made recommendations. The result of those recommendations were the following: When you place the diagnosticians in pay grade 104 and included their stipend in that number, they were 7% above the market. So it may be true, and I can't debate or speak to whether or not I can pick up the phone and call a particular pathologist at another district, another diagnostician, and say, hey, how much are you making? It may be true that that person is above the midpoint. You might be able to find some that are below the midpoint. That's going to depend on a whole host of factors: the number of employees, years of experience. And we're not talking about one-to-one comparisons. We're talking about groups, because you're setting a salary schedule. You're talking about large numbers of people. That group of employees at 104, the pay grade 104 for the diagnosticians, they are 7% above the market. They're not underpaid. They're paid above the market rate. The second group, speech-language pathologists, their placement at 104 and wrapping their stipend in resulted in them being 2% below the market. So there's a group, if you look at the median or the market level, they're 2% below it, slightly below. The third group, speech-language pathologist assistants, were placed in grade level 103. Their salary with the stipends was 11% above the market. So again, they're not being underpaid. That is exactly what Ms. Cooper found, and she went through. Now, she did make a recommendation because of the evidence that was presented at the hearing, that, well, some people are going to be paid more, some people are going to be paid less. Hey, I can call Clint, I can call El Paso, I can find people that are being paid more money. Sure. And what she said is, well, the district as an organization should be looking every year to see how your employees compare, and where they fit in compared to other districts. You want to be competitive. And she specifically recommended, "I recommend the district review the speech-language pathologist market data for the next school year. Look and see how you're going to turn out." That's important from the administration's standpoint, because it is our position as an administration that you not make mid-year salary adjustments based on a grievance. It's not the time to do it. The time to do it is when you're evaluating your employees overall with everybody else. This group of employees, it is true, they went through reclassification. There was a study. They did have a stipend. I'm just going to use raw numbers. You had a base salary of $60,000. Your stipend was $9,000. TASB said roll them all into one. You're now making $69,000. There was a point when there was a discussion about this contract issue that was brought up, and you can find that in Ms. Cooper's decision at pages three, the very bottom, and on to the top of page four. Nobody in this group has lost or been paid less than they were paid before. Everybody got an increase. Now, you can debate or disagree with whether that increase, for me as an individual, is what I really want. I always want more. But nobody received a reduction in pay. And Ms. Cooper thought that was important. She pointed that out. She also gets into the budget projections, and that's what I am talking about when I say that the administration recommends you not do this on a grievance basis. You do this on a planning, looking-forward basis. If you're going to budget for increases in pay, it needs to be done at a department level, and that's discussed in Ms. Cooper's recommendation. The second item that was requested that Ms. Cooper addressed was that the stipends be reinstated. Ms. Cooper denied that request. The stipends were included. They weren't removed. They weren't taken away. They're still being paid. They're just being called something different. They're being included within the salary. So she said no, and that's the shortest point of Ms. Cooper's decision. It's just one little paragraph. And the final point that was raised was that there be some explanation of the formula used for the calculation and the compensation that was changed. There is a timeline and a recount of the meetings that were held, and that is at the very beginning of Ms. Cooper's recommendation. It's at page two. It goes through the process, full page, recounting what was done to evaluate the stipends, to evaluate the pay classifications and how it was made, including meetings that were held. It is Ms. Cooper's opinion and recommendation to the Board that, based on the information that was provided, that there was more than ample information given to the groups of employees, and that they were made aware of how this was being done. She goes on to say that she doesn't think further explanations would do any good. Frankly, what we have here is a disagreement. A group of employees saying, well, we believe, and I don't discount their belief, we believe we're being paid unfairly or in an amount that's too low. We want to be paid more. We think we're more valuable. Okay, I can understand that. But it's been through the hearing process. You had an independent third person come in. TASB did the study. I've given you the numbers. in, TASB did the study, I've given you the numbers, again, they are, one group is seven percent above the market, one group is two percent below the market, the third group is eleven percent above the market. That's not unfair pay, if you're looking at a market analysis. And so it's our recommendation as an administration that you either accept and approve of the decision by the hearing officer, Ms. Cooper, or you take no action. If you take no action on the decision by Ms. Cooper, her decision stands in place and there will be no change. Thank you.
At this time, the employees representative may now present rebuttal.
Look, good evening, President Nahada, school board members and Dr. Espinoza. My name is Clara Recoder, and I have had the privilege of being an educator for the past decade, and many of those years in special education. Special education has always held a special place in my heart, and I've always wanted to help those individuals who are most vulnerable in society. I wanted to give those students and their parents a voice, I wanted these students to know they were capable of anything, and that they had a teacher who was willing to go the extra mile for them. But like in any position, I saw that my influence was limited, and I chose to go back to school, study hard, and become an educational diagnostician so I could help mend the parent-campus bond that we often see gets worn down over time. I could easily recite to you the job responsibilities a diagnostician have been assigned and have we seamlessly performed daily, but I trust that you are given a copy of those requirements. And in comparison to surrounding districts, the duty expectations pale in comparison to ours. Special education is constantly evolving, and this is why many of our parents, teachers, administrators rely on their diagnostician to help guide them. As an educational diagnostician, understanding how to interpret and execute law requires finesse. Our role is not only to advocate for our students who receive services, but also effectively educate families, the campus, and the district as a whole. While our expertise lies in assessment practices, demand high level of skill to be well-versed in the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, and how it applies to our state and district, we are also called upon to serve in numerous other capacities. In addition to our job description, is how we are active participants of the response and intervention team, how we are consulted and often test students with dyslexia, and in addition to the depth of knowledge of disciplinary procedures, graduation requirements, homebound services, and scheduling a curriculum. Our day-to-day responsibilities are inundated with collaboration with teachers, administrators, related staff, and district service staff, in consultation with outside agencies, professionals, and parents, and students. The role of diagnostician in SISD has evolved, to which now demands that we are completing numerous and additional expectations while carrying on the duties and expertise assessment. In addition to the expectations for some diagnosticians to work extreme hours in the office and at home, to ensure that we are compliant with deadlines. And with that said, surrounding districts currently pay more to individuals with our certification and knowledge base. They even compensate their bilingual diagnosticians with an additional stipend with, uh, for bilingual testing. Bilingual testing requires additional skill set to interpret scores and have an understanding of language acquisition. We do not currently offer that here in SISD. What brings us all here today is a subject that our stipend was rolled over into our base pay when we were awarded the reclassification this past school year, despite our responsible efforts to understand how the district came to this decision to absorb our and our speech therapist stipends, when no other profession had this done to them.
I'm sorry, your time is up.
Thank you.
An administration representative may now present rebuttal.
Um, just briefly, thank you. If you look at page five of, uh, the hearing officer, Ms. Cooper's recommendation, the very, very first paragraph, um, she talks about the reclassification of these types of employees, and it is, based on the evidence that was received at the hearing, TASB was really recommending that, and I'm not saying that every district in El Paso has done this, because I understand that some of them have not, but it's a recommendation so that you're following best practices and you're paying your employees in a way that can be managed, that all districts include these types of stipends in base pay. Paying a stipend is seen as an archaic, improper way to do this going forward, which is why Socorro contracted with TASB and received the recommendation. And the board, uh, this went through the budget process, the board process, and it was approved by the board to make these adjustments back in two thousand and eighteen. And with that, we would just ask that you either, one, affirm the decision of the hearing officer, or take no action. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blanco. Do members of the board have questions for the parties of this grievance through the attorney's?
Do you have any questions?
Do you have questions?
I do.
And it's just to ask them for information, and then it will be discussed.
Well, actually, I need to ask our individuals. And I'm just curious, because, you know, we're seeing two sides, we're seeing a battle for a, for a stipend. At the end of the day, to me, it's, it's money, and if it's a stipend or if it's put into their salary, I want to know the difference between other districts and ours on this issue, because we want to be competitive, if I'm correct, right, to keep our highly individuals. Now, if we're way below what they're paying, then they might go, well, we're off, and something's wrong. You know, I don't care if it's a stipend, or I don't care if it's isn't put into their salary, but we got to be competitive. That's what this school district, you know, fights for, and I think that we need to keep fighting for it. So I want to know the difference right now between Penny Sleda and Clint compared to ours. Can anybody answer that for me?
Okay. And, and, just a real quick, how many weeks do they work a year? Is it thirty-six, thirty-seven weeks a year, or is it?
They go by days.
Oh, no, they go by days, but.
Two hundred and twelve days.
Also, two-twelve.
And then the, the SLPs work one eighty-seven days.
Okay.
It, it's my understanding that...
I can, I can just represent to you that, based on the information that's been provided, that the Socorro School District, um, has the higher, uh, average pay with the exception of Canyoteo, which is at the speech language pathologist, their midpoint's three sixty-five, Socorro's is three fifty-four. If you compare it, El Paso School District, Paso's three twenty-five, they're lower. Esleta's a three fifteen, they're lower.
And I guess what I'm, what I'm getting, and I apologize to you, Mr. Blanco, I apologize, is I, I go by hard numbers, I want to know what the hard number is at the end of the day. You know, at the end of the day is, they make these many, they work these many days, this is what they're making, this is what this school district's making at the end of the day, this is what they're making at the end of the, you know, I want the hard number. I mean, you're giving me numbers right now, I'm going to have to start writing things down and try to add things up.
Well, I can tell you that, um, it's in the record, but the, the pay levels, based on minimum, midpoint, and maximum, the Socorro School District is higher at each one of these various points, with the exception of a couple at Canyoteo. Otherwise, you're competitive. Now, and to your point, I can't, I can't speak to workloads.
No, I'm not going off. I, I, I know that's tough, and I'm not, I'm not going off the workload, I'm, I'm trying to figure out the number. What's the difference in pay between, because I, I got some, I was trying to do some math, I wasn't paying, not that I wasn't paying attention, I was trying to add things up real quick, um, and I was adding this paper, I'm, I was basically doing that to max, I didn't go through all, I didn't have time. You know, even on the max, you know, we're, yeah, we, we come up on top, but then you add in the stipends, and then we're just blown out of the water. You know, on some of them, we might be, there's like one that we're even with them on, on, with the stipend, but then the other three were pretty much, you know, they're over us on, on the stipends. You understand what I'm saying?
Yes, you, if, if I understand you correctly, you're saying if you take the salary figure, which we're, I say, we, Socorro School District is higher, but if you compare it to, um, Esleta, and Esleta's offering a stipend in addition to the salary, then that position in Esleta would pay more.
Oh, yeah, yeah, because I, I went on the high end on, on this, I'm not even sure what this one is. You know, I added the days, the weeks, and then times five, whatever, and then, you know, I, you know, one was sixty-nine thousand, you know, we, we were paying seventy-seven, but then you kick in, these Sledas, that fifteen thousand dollar, you guys act in your CCC, whatever, and then plus the nine thousand CFs, you know, we're just, that's a lot of money. And so, you're, you're telling me we're competitive, but right here at the max, it really doesn't seem competitive. So what I'm trying to figure out is where we're at. And I, and I apologize, I just really want the hard number, it's really what, that's really just what I want, I want the hard number, what, compared to Sleda, you know.
Well, it'd be, I'll give you an example, speech language pathologists, one hundred and eighty-seven days at Socorro, one hundred and eighty-eight days in Esleta, if you add in, this is the midpoint figure, if you add in the salary with the five percent increase that was given, is sixty-nine thousand five hundred and seven dollars.
Yeah, but, yeah, the five percent, everybody gave five percent.
Yeah, the, the Sleda.
No, 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 it's, it's still.
I'm just giving you the number.
How much?
Esleta is sixty-two thousand two hundred and fifty-eight. Now, Esleta still pays that stipend?
That's correct.
Esleta still pays a fifteen thousand dollar stipend for that position.
So it's sixty-two plus fifteen?
Total compensation, yes.
Sixty-two plus fifteen?
Seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven.
And we're at sixty-nine?
Yeah, because you don't pay that.
That's correct.
But quickly, they work two, two oh two, two hundred and two days, and we work two hundred and twelve?
No.
No, this is for the SLP, so we work one eighty-seven, they work one eighty-eight.
No, but I'm talking about throughout the, here are these...
That's a different category of employees, that'd be the Diags.
So it's a one-day difference? And the difference in pay is how much?
Um, oof, you're asking me to do math really fast? Seventy-seven, sixty-nine, a, a little less than eight thousand.
Eight thousand.
That's a big, that's a significant difference. And I, not, not to get me wrong, like, again, I never liked Esleta, so...
Well, but if you, there are three, remember, there are three categories of employees, and that is the one, the speech language pathologist assistant, no, they're the ones that were two percent below.
That were two percent below.
The market, okay, so if you take up the diagnosticians, the midpoint for Socorro, salary totals, all in, seventy-eight thousand eight hundred dollars.
Okay, Socorro.
Same position in Esleta, diagnostician, they receive a sixty-six thousand dollar salary and a seven thousand dollar stipend, for a total amount of seventy-three thousand. They are below the amount that Socorro is paying, even though they receive a stipend. So I'm not, when I gave the presentation, remember, there are, there are three positions. One is two percent below the midpoint, the other is seven percent above, and one is eleven percent above, so it just depends on which one you are actually going to look at, because they're not, the speech language pathologist assistants, at Socorro, it's fifty-eight thousand nine hundred and three dollars, at, um, Esleta is fifty-three thousand with a two thousand dollar stipend, so they're fifty-five thousand and change, they're below what you're paying in Socorro. So there's one position where you're a little bit below, eight thousand dollars, I'm not going to say that's nothing, but the other ones, you're above. So when you're adjusting pay, that's what we don't believe, as an administration, you do it through a grievance, because then you're hitting different groups at different times. I did hear a comment, and I'll, I'll address it because it's true, the number of days, there are two hundred and twelve days that are worked, so there's four more days that are, no, I'm sorry, ten more days that are worked.
Ten more days, that's what I was getting at, there's a big difference there.
Than in Esleta, so it's at a...
Is that only for diagnosticians?
Yes, only for diagnosticians, yes, sir.
So they're having to work extra, those extra ten days compared to Esleta?
They receive, um, five thousand dollars more in pay for that.
I'm sorry.
Five thousand dollars more in pay. We over, our position in that, for that position, we pay more than Esleta, including the stipends.
And Esleta's got the nine thousand, I believe, stipend?
Seven thousand stipend.
Seven thousand, sir.
Yeah, apples to apples, Socorro pays seventy-eight thousand eight hundred dollars and forty cents for that position at the midpoint, Esleta pays seventy-three thousand eight hundred and ninety-four dollars.
But they're not working the same days, they're working more, we're working, our, our employees are working ten days more.
Yes, sir.
That's what I'm getting at.
Yes, sir.
But they are getting paid more. Are there any other questions? Okay, the board will confer with legal counsel in accordance with section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one of the Texas Government Code, and no final action, decision, or vote with regard to this matter will be made except upon reconvening in open session. This board is now recessed into closed session, the time is six forty-five. We are back in session, the time is nine twenty-six. Item three B, discussion and possible action regarding the request for the city of Socorro at fifteen feet wide-long North Rio Vista Road at Sanchez Middle School.
Um, may I? Thank you, Board President Nahada, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. The items that involve property, items three, B, and C, we went over the options for either a possible sale or some change in the character of the strip, one being a fifteen-foot-wide area along North Rio Vista, another being a sixty-foot-wide area along North Rio Vista next to the two schools, one being Sanchez, the other being Socorro. It's our recommendation that you authorize Mr. Iantin to go back to the city of Socorro and discuss with them the terms that we discussed in closed session for either a sale and a purchase by the city, or some other change to the setback requirements that would be agreed to by the board at a future date, if Mr. Iantin believes that will work for the city of Socorro and for the school district. And we can take those up together at the same time in one motion.
Okay.
So moved. Second.
I want you to take your poll.
I have a motion by Mr. Geta, and a second by Mr. Gondeta, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Blanco. Item five A, discussion and possible action regarding Level Three grievance appeal filed by AFT on behalf of certain diagnosticians and SLP members. Mr. Blanco?
Thank you, uh, we had the opportunity to hear the oral presentations in the board, actually asked for some additional information in closed session. The administration would entertain a motion now, obviously, from our presentation, we asked that the decision by Linda Cooper be allowed to stand, or that the board take no action, but it's up to the board to decide if you want to take action, modify the relief that was requested, grant the relief that was requested, or take no action.
If there is no motion, uh, we will move on to five B, consider approval of administrative recommendations. Dr. Espinoza, one A, assistant principal for Eastlake High School.
Yes, President Nahada, members of the board, administration recommends Ms. Greta Brazgazia as assistant, for assistant principal at Eastlake High School.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Gondeta, and a second by Mr. Geta, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Uh, item one B, Montwood Middle School, Dr. Espinoza.
Yes, President Nahada, members of the board, administration recommends Mr. Jonathan Flores to assume all the roles and the responsibilities as assistant principal at Montwood Middle.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Maraitlis, and a second by Mr. Gondeta, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. And item one C, Salvador Sanchez Middle School.
Yes, President Nahada, members of the board, administration recommends Mr. David Macias to assume all the roles and responsibilities as assistant principal at Salvador Sanchez Middle School.
Moved to approve. Second.
You got it?
Paul.
I have a motion by Mr. Menon, and a second by Mr. Geta, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. If there's no further business before this board, we are adjourned, the time is nine twenty-six, nine twenty-nine, sorry.